Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to another exciting episode of the Halifax Board of Selectmen's COVID Meetings. Today is our Thursday edition. We're going to look for syndication pretty soon, just in case. Typically, what we do is we start with a COVID update. We've also been told to try to do a better job of speaking into our microphones because, apparently, it is not particularly audible when you're watching on social media platforms. So, as usual, we'll start with our Board of Health agent, Bob.
Good afternoon. We had two new cases today.
Two?
Yep. One this morning, one a little bit later on this morning. Those are the two newest. And then, as we started to allude to last meeting, on Friday, order number 53, which is certain businesses and activities limiting hours of alcohol and food will be taking effect. So I visited the restaurants in town, and they know that they have to stop serving by 9:30 at night. There's also a 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. curfew, so to speak, that people shouldn't be out and about.
Where would they go anyway? I'm just thinking.
Well, that order comes with, you know, you shouldn't be over a friend's house after 10 o'clock. You should be back in your house by then, so.
Because you're safe until 10 o'clock, but you're not safe after 10 o'clock.
Basically, the later it gets, the more bad decisions you make, because nothing good happens at 2:00 in the morning.
I caught on where it was coming.
I don't know.
By 10 o'clock, you're already primed for bad decisions, in my opinion. Whatever. You know, it is what it is.
So, Bob, that's an advisory, right? That's not an order?
It's an advisory. They said it would still be okay, like to pick up food or to go to the grocery store.
But there's no...
Gathering.
But there's no way that we're going to enforce that.
There's no way you can enforce it.
It's just an advisory order, right?
I would think that it's an advisory, but it may be something, if it was a police stop, that they'd do it like an educational sort of thing. Hey, you really shouldn't be out, you know, at this time of night, you know, just to drive home a message wherever and however we can, you know? If we hear of anything, if it comes into the office, I'll make a follow-up phone call to the parties involved. Because at this point, I mean, we've come up with the mask orders, and I'll get to that in a minute, but we need the educational piece. People don't get to wear a mask by now.
Yeah, they're not going to get it.
How else they get it unless it's just total education? One of the towns in Plymouth specifically has hired an outside security agency that they're going to have meander the streets during the day. So, you know, we're not at that point here in Halifax, but we're really pretty darn solid. I've spent a lot of time in our establishments and just watching in general. Are we perfect? No, but is anything perfect, you know? But I think, you know, added attention on our part would be good, but we certainly don't need a police force or a police state, you know, coming out there for masks.
What type of authority did they give this private security company to deal with civilians?
You know, I just saw that the Select Board and the Board of Health promoted it. It was in the old Colony News.
Gee, be careful.
Yeah?
This is Jim. I'm not going to warn you.
Yes.
Can I ask something? The question was whether I was an advisory. It's not an advisory. It's an order.
The mask is an order, but it's an advisory that the 9:30, 10 o'clock, there's no enforcement authority to enforce that.
I believe, I read the order, and it gets a little confusing because somebody would say that it's a premium of all fine, these are off-stripped and set of penalties, and some say high level. The way I interpreted it, there's mask order and the new gathering order was that it's mandatory, unless you guys have seen something different. I can tell you that whether it's mandatory or advisory, but the way it has to work out, I'm not going to try to force it. I'm not going to take any means or two of it. Again, as Bob said, we're going to try to do the educational part, but I agree that there's an order unless you determine that the rest is a little different.
All of us standing come up and give the comments to the mask chiefs, is it the travel part of it is an advisory? As far as a mask and gathering, that's, I believe, an order. And they have advised us, again, as you said, not to move the enforcement at all. If the Board of Health wants to, basically, we're there to assist the Board of Health. Obviously, we know in Halifax, we all got a couple of Board of Health agents anyway. It would be an educational portion of it. I don't feel, I don't feel good about telling the guys to want people over at 10 o'clock for no motor vehicle violations. That could have been a whole can of worms would be in Boston in no time. So that's the guidance that we received from the attorney and the mask chief. So that's looked at, the whole thing to educate, basically.
Mr. Chairman, can I just be very, because I've got an busy day today.
Sure.
We've been on here today, Board of Health meeting last night, discussed some of the latest issues in town.
Alan, could you and Bob switch? So will you get the mic?
Sorry, I'll speak into the mic. The reason I'm here, the Board of Health last night had some discussion relative to some of the incidents that we had involved with some of the town employees. And we're going to make a suggestion to the board, because you control the employees. But what we're hoping is that the board would consider a sign-in log and temperature checks. Basically, I think it's what Chief Verres is doing with his men for all town employees, and especially the login, phone number, contact tracing. I think the chief has got some of his firemen that have been involved with the contact tracing. If we have another issue, like we had a few weeks ago, I think it's important that everybody that comes into any of the buildings, that we have some sort of a log with a phone number. That log can be held by the department head and then maybe forwarded at the end of the week to the Board of Health, if necessary. So that's the meat of the discussion that we had.
Are you talking about just the employees or everyone that comes to Town Hall?
I'm talking about employees. I don't think we've gotten to a point where we need to have someone sitting out in front door doing temperature checks and phone numbers. I don't know that Town Hall is that busy. It's more because of this latest employee issue.
Okay.
I know going to the Highway Department, I sign in. They don't ask for any phone numbers, but I think we're getting critical now, and we don't want to be in a red zone, that some sort of program be instituted so that we know what the employees are doing, and if they got a temperature issue, we send them home right away. I think that's what your department's doing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we could adopt a policy that's similar, you know, at least for the next 90 days or until the emergency orders are suspended.
Who's doing that? Who would do the temperature checks? That's part of it.
Department head, or whoever's in charge. I mean, just to be the department head. You could, the department head would be responsible for the log, but I think anybody that comes in, you know, that can do the temperature and just write it in in the book. You know, if they see that there's an issue with the temperature reading, then obviously they're either going to leave or notify the department head.
What happens when you've got a split shift or people coming in? Is that expected to be definitely a shift change?
Well, if you've got a split, I think most of our employees work eight-hour shifts. They're going to come in at 8:00 or 9:00 or whatever time they're coming in, other than your maintenance guys. They just fill in the log. They've come in at, I don't really care about the time they come in, because they come in, they take in the temperature, they log it, and there's a phone number available for contact tracing.
Well, you'd have those numbers anywhere if they're an employee.
You have to remember that if you get a situation on Saturday, and all of a sudden there's a call that comes in, it would be important, probably, because Bob would have to handle it along with the chief, so that are they going to scurry around looking for numbers or, I mean, and that's totally up to those.
Well, it would make more sense, rather than having to put the number in every single day, that Bob has a complete list, if we're going to go down this road. That Bob simply has a complete list of employees with phone numbers and do it once.
That's fine. That's fine, however they want to do it. We just want to be able to make sure that if we can prevent another incident or any future incident, that's all.
Is this being extended to board and committee meetings?
Our discussion was more for employees. You know, I don't, I think there's enough separation at some of the committee meetings. I know, you know, we don't have any guests at the Board of Health. We do a few at the Planning Board. I don't know that that's necessary, but that's a decision, you know, my board is not going to make that decision. We're going to put it out to you guys. You guys control the employees. Those are the thoughts that we had, and we'll throw the ball to y'all corner.
I think you're either all in or you're not in at all.
Okay, then.
Because you're allowing people to come into the building and potentially contaminate surfaces or what have you. I mean, if you're going to protect everybody, you're going to protect everybody. And this is not an easy system. I know in the other town over there, they're monitoring anybody that walks into the Town Hall. You can't go into any town office or any of the town buildings, not granted they don't have as many, unless you first go to the townhouse and have your temperature taken and your contact information written down, and then you can get a pass to go. That's an onerous system, but it seems to work over there for whatever reason. I think we get far more visitors than they do. I think it would be really difficult to take everybody's temperature here. But the employees, for sure, I'm guessing we could do something there. I'm not sure that the department head thing is the best way to go, but that's certainly something we can think about.
Well, in terms of sheer logistics, and I'm not, again, just if it's going to be done talking about logistics, do we get one thermometer per building? So that, because, well, we've got our, let's say, eight departments in this building. Do we have eight thermometers? Do we have one thermometer? Who gets the thermometer? Because, and if everybody's coming in, let's say between 7:30 and 8:00, if it's one thermometer, it's got to start bouncing. I'm not, you know, my hope, Jason, my hope is at this point that thermometers are more widely available.
I would think so. My guess would be by each department, they're all, they're cheap enough, they're not going to have to walk around looking for thermometers.
Right.
Do we want to have like a sheet where someone would, you could open, you know, if you had sanitizer and a thermometer, you could almost do it yourself, have a stack of sheets where you're just writing in, the time, you don't even need to write your temperature just within normal limits.
Clear.
So would we be better off with an online Excel spreadsheet?
So we do it on an iPad. So I don't know if that's the best way.
The only reason why I'm thinking of this, because it's going to have to go to Bob if somebody's hired. So if every individual, if it's not into one, like you could have one spreadsheet with everyone tracking in a different, I forget what you call them, not just a column, you could have a different workbook inside of the spreadsheet for each person, and you could set the security so that the Board of Health and the employee could see it for each one of the, and then that way Bob would have the daily information if somebody has an issue. But it's really going to have to be, he's going to have to get the information, so he really needs to be the keeper of the log.
One of the things is, you can leave a log out on the table, again, as Chief said, that's to say, you know, within normal limits. But if you're not within normal limits, other associates entitled to that information, or is it...
Well, it's going to...
I don't know.
I just want to think through, like, just talking out and thinking through, I'm just trying to figure out what our objective is, because, you know, we do do it. At the end of the day, we want to make sure our employees come in, test that they haven't done non-symptomatic, and not, you know, the temperature piece is definitely, is a component, although I've seen that debated, you know, some places have stopped doing the checks altogether. So, you know, we want to make sure our employees attest every day that they don't, they're not symptomatic is the main problem. But we know, like, as far as contact tracing lies, unless an employee comes to us and says that they are now experiencing symptoms, I mean, we already have some form of record to know who was exposed, that we have payroll records, we have, you know, we don't know schedules, things like that.
But the other thing is, and I may have gotten the stories incorrect, it was, the situation that we had earlier was more, unfortunately, employees making decisions that probably they shouldn't have made. Not so much who was in and out of the building, but if people had, in fact, stayed the six feet away and kept their mask on and such, then we should have been able to say, okay, you weren't within six feet of this person for 15 minutes. Yet, we had a number of people who, as it is, in my understanding, were not even associated in the same department with that first person, Patient Zero called. That was a problem. It was, you know, it was not, I mean, we can do this, but the big thing is the behavior. It's not getting a list of people and getting them checked in at 8:00 a.m. It's what they do after 8:00 a.m. I mean, I'm not saying not do this, but it wouldn't, having this system in place simply might have helped contact tracing, but it wouldn't have solved the problem of people making poor decisions.
So, you know, I think, and I wasn't going to speak, but I think the case we're talking about, the issues were across the continental more than they were inside one department.
Well, inside one building, yes, but multi-departments, yeah.
Right. So, you know, it would be similar to, like, right now I have someone working on a sign, like, the guy came in for the sign. It probably would have been wise to get his contact information, similar to the way that they do it at some restaurant.
Some of the restaurants, yeah.
Some restaurants in Halifax, but I've been to restaurants where you go in, the person, they want your name, and they want your phone number and all that. That would be, that would make sense, because if you did have someone who was symptomatic, we could contact that individual, you know, anyone who comes into the fire department. The people that are at the fire department know who was there because, like I said, they have payroll records and all those other things. So in this case, where we had, for example, you know, I had Steve Haywood stop by the fire station earlier today to discuss an issue. It probably would be wise for me to maybe know that Steve Haywood was in my building. Other than that, I know who else is in the building, so I know who's working there. But I have no record other than me knowing that Steve Haywood was in the building today, that the sign company was in the building today. Those are the people I think that would have more of a problem keeping track of and, you know, to reach out to and say, hey, we have an issue here at the fire department, and how do I, you know, I need to tell the sign guy, I need to tell Steve, I need to tell the water department guy to check our water meter, you know? That's just my thought come out. I don't have, certainly don't have the answers. I just want to make sure that whoever they're trying to do or accomplishing, who are accomplishing what they're trying to do.
Yeah, I think it was my board's intention just to make the Selectmen aware of it. We were throwing out those ideas to bounce them off you guys. Ultimately, you have that decision. We just want to make sure that there is the ability, that we do have some information so that, and the contract tracing part, I'm sure that in your contract tracing experience, you'd probably run into some difficulties, people don't want to answer, whatever. Those are just our concerns.
If you have Town Hall, I think, I don't know, A, what ability we have, but it is the residents who are coming in that are the ones that we would need to worry about. Now, is it practical or even possible to obtain that information? A, is it legal that people have to...
I don't think it's legal to require them.
If someone shows up to do business at Town Hall, do they have to give us their damn phone?
Well, I can tell you that... Depends on the instance. Obviously, if you want to pay a tax bill anonymously, we'll take your money.
I can tell you, the other Town Halls, I was in Plymouth recently, there the first day they opened. There's a police officer and a person there. They didn't take temperatures, but they took your name and they also took your phone number. That was at Plymouth. And then Bob just got an email.
Very similar, I think, very common.
I think Taunton, there's some other towns. Was it Taunton, somebody else mentioned that you can't get in the building without that information? So, you know, I don't know if residents are that important, you're probably correct. Maybe you get more exposure with that.
Well, I think it's going to be, I mean, it's going to be the person that comes up to a meeting at the Building Inspector's Office and discusses their claim. So it's going to be any other, you know, someone that comes in to talk about an issue with the Assessors' Office or the Town Clerk's Office.
But I'll give you an example, but it might be that you have to follow the 15-minute rule. I mean, we, last week, we had people who wanted to bypass the drop-off box for dropping off ballots. Or they're paying a tax bill even this week. They're in and out in two minutes. Do we, you know, if we're following the 15-minute rule, then normally, under contact tracing, we wouldn't worry about it.
My board was more interested in employee part of it. It does open up a can of worms, and unfortunately, that's a decision that you guys got to make, just how far you want it to go. We don't want to impede on anybody's rights. We just want to make sure that if there's an issue, then we can nip it in the bud.
The only thing that I can see, if you, if you laid on the department here to assign somebody or whatever, if anybody comes in the building to do business, have a sign-in seat at the desk and the time, that's not impeding on anybody's rights.
Current use of appointments. The other way of thinking is, would it be possible, you know, I think getting people, you know, everyone knows that they shouldn't come to work sick.
Right.
But it is programmed in our head to still come to work, like, for 90% of people.
Yeah, no. I understand, yeah.
For 90% of people, they don't care, they like, they feel that they have to be up. So, and it's those constant reminders that tell them, you know, so, for example, if you log into your computer in the morning, is it possible, you know, like, we have an acknowledgement when we log in, that we're logging into Town Halifax Network, is there an acknowledgement that we could put when people log into their computer in the morning that they attest that they don't have COVID symptoms? It's something that's in their face right away, they have to do it, they have to do it. And we're also getting a form of acknowledgement just with access to network.
There's a way to change that description, but I don't know if there's a way, I mean, the login is going to be captured, but I don't know if there's a way to add another feature to say, okay, yes or no. It would just be an acknowledgement that you saw that, but I'm not sure there's a way to add a yes or no.
Or even just, you need to make, check that box off. I acknowledge the following, that boom, 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 boom. Check this box, fine, you've acknowledged it, you've said so.
You can open a dialogue box for sure in a login sequence.
Yeah. I can talk to Caesar about it, yeah.
I'm just throwing up. Yeah. On a login, I know, as a couple months ago, when we were kind of in the hot times, I guess, you know, a lot of, we were doing a sign-in where they had to basically answer a bunch of questions about how they felt, you know, you guys from the CDC, and then they would update it and do the temperature check. And each, and the job officer would do the temperature check, and he would check off the knowledge that he had the temperature and then he was feeling well, so there's a bunch of questions, a bunch of symptoms that they had to check off. We stopped doing that probably about a couple months ago when the CDC said that the high count is not one of the problem symptoms, so that we've stopped doing that. I mean, as far as contact tracing and the part of my side, it's usually two or three people. And again, I would have the same issues that Chief Verres has, where whenever it comes in, we don't let anybody go together than the maintenance people, even like delivery guys, they don't go into the inner building, they stay out in the lobby. So to track those people would be a difficult thing to do. I mean, if the board decides to go back to the temperature checks and the checklist, that's fine, you know? We already have that in place. It basically, you know, it's a book, but a binder, and they just, you know, initial it, and then take the temperature, and then off they go, you know, off the work they go.
Alan, was the discussion based off of whether or not the protocol was followed? It seems like the protocol wasn't followed, not that we don't have one in place. From my understanding, I don't know the complete details of Patient Zero and interactions and how the quarantining happened, but it seemed like the protocol that we had in place didn't seem like it was followed.
I don't know what the protocol you have, whether or not there's some issue between going into, in between buildings, whether you're going to the fire department or police station or Town Hall. I don't, I don't know that protocol. Our only concern was that we just wanted to be able to try to contain it if it does happen again. Charlie, you might be able to answer. I don't know if someone comes from Town Hall and goes to the transfer station, do they need to sign in and out? I don't, there is no policy.
No, so if we have an employee from any department, just as a member of the public, the building's open. So we have somebody from the library picking up paychecks or from any other department picking up paychecks, for instance. They're not signing in or anything like that. No more than any member of the public is. And if one of us has to, I mean, it's rare right now that any of us are going to any of the other buildings. It's more likely that you have people making return trips. They go in the Town Hall and then they go back to their buildings. I mean, I don't think I've been inside the police station since March. I think I've maybe been down to the fire department once or twice since March. Same thing with the recycling center. I don't think, I know I haven't been in the library, just as an example.
I might suggest that maybe we'll come up with some educational something that we can send to the employees, and you can think about this policy. Just, a constant reminder is probably going to help these people, because every day you seem to forget, you know? No one's, in my family's ever got it, and until somebody gets it...
We did send out a reminder, you know, I worked with Bob, this went out with the last paycheck, last Thursday.
Okay, with the paychecks?
Yeah.
I mean, my biggest concern would be individuals that share the same vehicle, whether the Highway Department or Police Department, where two people are in the same, they test well, but then they ride together in the car, and for some reason, they make a mistake and take their mask off or whatever. Those are concerns. You can't control those.
Well, it's definitely Dr. Bruce with COVID fatigue, you know? People just, you know, we have policies that if, in the end, those come back from hospital, both people are supposed to wear a mask. How do, like, it's difficult. You drink your coffee, it's, it's hard, but like you said, it's just a, we just need to be able to...
Constantly reminding.
No. Educate as much as possible.
Yeah, and then the other thing I think is incidents where somebody does test positive have a...
It's a reboot.
Reboot, and just drive a bus, we can, and I was in a fight, that was one of the, you know, one of the, you know, ones that wasn't following protocol, because, you know, like, I went to Tony's office without a mask, or, but after one of our guys tested positive, you know, it's like now everybody who wears a mask in the station, that signs, you know, figure out signs, masks covering it at all times, because I think we all get laxed to that, you know? And I think, like you said, educate, 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 kind of a refresh.
You might want to start with that policy. I don't know what goes out with paychecks, but just, we want to bring it to your attention. We might not need, you might not need a policy, but again, as Troy said, two people in a car, under the new governor's orders, technically, those people, if they're not related, should wear a mask. They should wear masks regardless, and like I said, we're not going to go back, we're not going to be stopping trucks and looking at cars to see who's got masks. But again, that re-education, either by the department heads or this board, it's going to have to be constant. The next 90 days, I think, are going to be very difficult, the way the numbers are going.
I think that's one of the things we were going to talk about today, about making the wearing of masks in the building mandatory at all times. I think that's at least a simple thing to do, to everybody's point. I mean, there's moments like at...
I mean, there's moments like at lunchtime and everything, people are gonna just have to use some common sense and, you know, get some space. But at least that's a simple thing. As far as the contact tracing goes, I mean, if you really want to do it effectively, you have to do it extensively. Otherwise, you're just, you know, making yourself feel good.
Well, we can, Ian, I have phone numbers from the snow list, from the snow day list, to give to Bob. I need to get it updated, because I want to make sure we've had changes in personnel. But at least, you know, on a building-by-building basis, that can be a starting point. At least Bob will have the basic information. I can check with Caesar about, at least for those employees in this building, about the sign-in. So that rather than having to deal with paperwork and everything like that, almost everybody in this building needs to log in when they're log, you know, working here. It's not necessarily the same in all the departments, but those departments where people have to regularly log in, unless they've already been doing something like, equivalent of sign-in, they could be doing that. So it's more, put it this way, in their face every single day. I mean, of course, at some point, maybe you need to change the sign on the login, because then people just, oh, yeah, check this box. It's like, you know, signing all those computer agreements. Fine, yes, okay, I've sold my soul, check, okay. But there, you know, I think there are a few things that shouldn't be too obtrusive and require more logistics than we might be able to handle at this point. I don't know about, you know, if you want to say about the masks, you know, outside of eating and drinking, which is the general rule.
I think we're kind of at that point at this time.
If I read the state of the game, right, we don't have to.
Well, except the lieutenant governor pointed at these standards that were issued in June. She was on a conference call this afternoon. These are the standards, and it's only the six feet. If you're, if you're, if you're in office and you can stay six feet away from other people, you don't have to wear a mask.
I think it would be helpful, this is my opinion, I think it would be helpful, I mean, you know, it helps to drive, to set the message out to employees, departments to drive on the masks a little bit easier, get the function of the board, it's, you know, it's not about the employees that worry about it, wear the mask, it's the employees that don't worry about it, that are not wearing the mask. That's why I have people, so, just my, two seconds.
Are you trying to make a decision available?
In terms of masks or in terms of?
Either.
I, I, I'd like to kind of work out the logistics of it first, I think. Today being Thursday, tomorrow being not a very particularly populated day, Monday would be.
Well, you have a Monday meeting, it's already posted, includes COVID and everything else.
Monday meeting, what is it, dinner and steak?
Party? Dinner and steak is Wednesday.
The holidays, Wednesday, yeah.
Park may come to me at Thursday.
We're not talking about Thursday.
I think that I'd support the wearing a mask all the time, unless you're drinking and keep six feet apart, because that's what we have at the elementary school. I'm not sure that I support, you know, contract tracing down everybody that comes in, because we don't require that at Walmart, and you're definitely gonna be in that store more than 15 minutes, so, I mean, I don't have a problem with employees, if they're dealing with somebody for more than 15 minutes, knowing they're down someplace. I think that might be wise, if you have somebody.
I don't have a problem necessarily with employees having a temperature check in the morning either. I mean, I think that's an easy enough thing to do. I don't know how effective it really is, but it's at least a sign of something, at least makes you think about if you have an issue or not.
I mean, trying to follow CDC guidelines, they change so frequently. I mean, you can use it as a basis, let's, I mean, let's just get real, we just want to make sure we can curb the virus. And however way you want to go, it's gonna be fine with us, we just want to plant that seed. And maybe you can do it step by step. Institute the face coverings, that might slow the process down.
I think the face covering is the easiest thing to do.
That would be the easiest thing.
Uh, in terms of trying to keep six feet apart, I think that's an impossibility. You can't do that all day long, I mean, people pass each other in the hallway, I mean.
Right, but it's six feet and 15 minutes. I mean, we, we've been, we've been very good in this building, that if we're going into the public areas, such as the corridors, that people, whether they're employees, and for that matter, the general public's been excellent about this, about wearing masks in the public areas.
Yeah, and like I said, I mean, that's the easiest thing to do, and I think we can at least start with that, if everybody's in agreement.
That would be repetitive, because we already have it in place. Far as the mask, we have more.
Well, if it is six feet, I mean, we would be altering that to.
Everyone wear it all the time.
At all times, I mean, I'm sure there's gonna be some people take exception to it.
I think as long as we have the caveat, just like we do in other places, of medically, you know.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you have to do that, and of course, at lunchtimes or whatever, but then you have, then you have to adhere to the six feet.
Right, and when I've gone through at lunch, in our kitchen here, which has a lunch, you know, lunch sitting tables there, people are keeping themselves six feet apart.
Yeah, if we have to allow the employees to stagger time so that they can use the lunch table or whatever, I think the department head should be open to.
Well, and we've, people are staggered, not everybody lunches at noon.
Yeah. I was just saying, because it's gonna get colder, and people aren't going outside like they have been.
Yeah, well, we have other alternatives too for sitting and eating.
But most of the back, you can utilize up here for a quick.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm getting at, that we've got some other areas that people could spread out. I don't, do we need a moment?
Well, it depends on what you want to do at this point, or whether you want to boot everything to Monday.
I don't think anything really is so desperate at the moment, that we can't wait till Monday, and everybody has a chance to think about it. If we want to include anything else in it, that's just my thought. If anybody has a different opinion, I wasn't happy to hear it.
I think if you want to push off till Monday, that's fine, but I think, basically, everyone's supposed to be wearing a mask, it's a Friday at all times in public, so. Yep.
I don't have a problem with just affirming that we have a policy that everybody should be wearing a mask at all times in the building. Other than for.
Medical care.
Medical.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
So we're six feet apart, and we're hearing all this.
Yeah, and then excluding having a lunch period and whatnot.
So that, okay, the motion is that all employees wear masks at all time in all places unless they're eating or drinking.
Or they have a medical condition.
Which, in fact, I believe the order now indicates that we need something from their doctor.
I didn't read that in, Charlie.
A verifiable medical condition.
Unless that's a.
No, this is, I'll look at the governor's order again, but.
Yeah, the governor's order is.
Well, I'll look.
I looked at that specifically, and you still have that medical.
No, the medical thing is there, and I understand that, but I believe I saw something that said that the employer can request some documentation, showing that the person has a medical condition, as opposed to what was allowed before.
Just saying.
Yeah, we require the students or the employees at the school to have a doctor's note if they're not going to.
I think, I think that's reasonable.
I'll second that.
We could amend it to that motion. I think I made it. Go ahead and second it. Everybody good, all those in favor?
Some other, sorry, go ahead, Alan.
Do you need me for anything?
Unless you want to talk about the toy drive.
The who?
The toy drive.
No, I don't want to talk about toy drives.
All right, so I think we got six feet, we got past Bob, unless Bob has something else? Anything else for you, Bob? Bob, anything else to add or ask or?
No, just, the board also wants me to get these, I think, each and every establishment out, as part of, just so that they have another face mask signed in their windows, saying that this is mandatory. But that also gives me that wrong contact with whoever's there. I've talked all the negatives, it's kind of getting a little bit deeper, it's like the systemic negatives at this point. And the follow-up was doing very, very good. So, we'll just have a sign-in window that says, probably you have blood alcohol instead of this state.
Chief?
Uh, just to kind of work on, you know, the potential testing program. We certainly have the ability, that discussed with Charlie this week, I was kind of out of commission, but to do the antibody testing and the nasal swabs if necessary, the big question comes down, and Charlie gave me a good list of questions to work off as a foundation as to what our goal will be. I'm struck, the antibody testing would certainly be easier, but I'm struggling to, and I want to work with Dr. Muse a little more on it, to see what the true benefit of that would be to us. Like, what's that gonna tell us, what people will be able to use that information for? And then the other component will be, you know, there are plenty of communities that are doing the molecular level tests, sending them off to a lab, how much money will one want to invest in that? You know, Christian's done, I think, 3,000 in their community so far. Interestingly, they put them into the red, and they get some blowback by citizens about that. Now we're the red because you did so much testing. If you didn't do that, we wouldn't be in the red. So, we continue to work, just work on that, that's all I have.
Nothing further, they don't mind.
So, Tom, I got a query from the organizer for the toy drive, the annual one that they run, the Girl Scouts run with the fire department, asking whether they can do it this year. And I did see Bob, because Bob hasn't been here, he doesn't, probably isn't aware of the toy drive. It's usually the first Saturday in December. What happens is Santa rides one of the fire department vehicles, and Mrs. Santa's there. Obviously, it's driven by, I think, one or two members of the fire department?
It's the fall department.
Fall department, okay.
Does it with the Girl Scouts?
Right.
You know, there's probably about six or eight people that, from the fire department that participate, and there's probably equal to double that in Girl Scouts, not the most paid.
And what I was saying was that, okay, let's go through this, it's outside. The challenges are going to be the six feet. And what I said is, if you're going to have people riding around in vehicles, in essence, they form their own pods. You know, we did some, we've told the Boy Scouts, for instance, for the Bowlin Can Drive, to do something similar. Don't keep mixing people up, so that you end up with 20 people, let's say, all possibly cross-contaminating each other. You've got two people on the northeast part of Halifax, they're collecting the toys, great. They're doing that, there's another couple, another group doing northwest, southwest, southeast, so that, but they don't mix.
I don't think they do it like that, because Santa drives.
Right, no, I understand, but, you know, but I don't, however they do it, we don't want a large group of people intermingling.
Right.
I think that's gonna be the crucial thing, and to minimize the number of people who are within six feet of each other during this event. And the event goes roughly, let's say, what's it, 10 to four?
Yeah, it's an all-day event, you know, the part that, the only part that concerns me, and I just think if you stress it to the organizers, they all end up back in the fire, like, that whole back end of the fire station is full of toys and people and.
Well, that's.
Organizing that, and so I, I mean, I think it's important to do, I'm just trying to figure out that piece of it, because, I mean, they have pizzas delivered sometimes, and so, I think it would just be stressing that, that you can only have a minimal amount of people trying to do, like, the goal is important, I think, but however it could be done safely.
How long are the toys at the fire department when they're doing?
Usually a day. I mean, so what happens, we'll actually have people that bring toys directly to the fire station, and we end up in the whole back, but they're not there for long.
Do they sort them there, or do they take them someplace else?
Um, I think, I think they just collect, like, they bring them all back there, and they move them to wherever, I don't even know what church they're bringing to anymore, Charlie.
I didn't even know that they brought it here or over to Arley, like, I didn't even know.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you needed a bigger space, if we needed to see if the all-purpose was available that day, so that they're not at the station. Just trying to think if they can still move forward with it and not.
That may be a good option. For that piece, it's still a reminder, you know, when they're bringing the toys back, just so they can sort them and get them out of them.
So, what I'd like to do then is not get a formal yes, as much as yes asterisk, as in, you need, you, the organizers, need to talk with the chief and need to talk with Bob in order to make this event a safe event. You may be doing things differently than you normally are doing. There may be some restrictions that may, you know, oh, why do we have to do this? And I'm not saying they're gonna whine about it, but somebody else may be whining about it, and move from there.
You're gonna have to make arrangements at the school to sanitize that area before school opens again, the phone.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, if we clean this up.
Right.
Or even, or even this room.
Rather than having to get stuff through the elevator up and down the stairs.
Oh, yeah.
With the APR, yeah.
People bring, like, one guy brings literally like six bicycles to the.
Oh, really?
Every year, yeah.
That's really nice.
Yeah.
So, I, I think. Yes, the idea would be that the APR might be a place to bring their toys when the flood and for the sorting.
Fire department board it out, and then we'll make a formal decision.
Because after this year, after this year, the last thing we want is kids in the camp.
First of all.
Right.
Yeah, right, not stuff of it all.
Yeah, good point. Does that sound reasonable to you?
If they work out the logistics, I.
I'm sure we.
Yeah, so I think we'll tentatively say we're in agreement as long as it can be worked out, and then we'll take a formal vote later.
Yeah, I mean. You know, maybe in a week, week and a half, we get another report from Jason and Bob saying, we've met with the Girl Scouts, we've got this organized, we're good to go.
Yeah.
Kevin Miller and the Haywood have our, actually, that was one of the reasons Steve stopped by today to talk about that, so they're.
I could pass whatever we want.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
And the state building down the Giants.
Yeah.
Toy dogs have been carefully got, but you know, they're a piece of. Basin, that one.
I don't like, my boy scout's gonna be doing a food drive, and we got to just revert to just drop off, so a lot of kids going to his house, it's gonna be.
All righty, I guess, unless somebody's got something else, we can.
I'll move. Well, the only other thing was, we did have an employee ask for further clarification about work from home.
Did we quote on the toy drive? I thought we were gonna wait until they worked out the logistics.
Basically, it's a tentative yes, but you want to hear back from Bob and from Jason, confirming that they've got a plan in place that's gonna be safe for everybody.
Okay.
So, with this situation, and the employee mentioned that the employees understands that would be any, be a limited, it's not a forever or extended or something like that. And I was thinking basically along the lines of saying, there has to be a reason, specific incident, specific event, that would cause the employee to be able to justify working from home. And they would need a note from their doctor stating the reasons why. And it would be for a limited time, a specific date certain, unless the board then extended it past that date. So, for instance, if, you know, let's say it might be two weeks or something like that, given the sort of timeline that we've talked about for people returning to work or something like that. I can put something together for the board to formally vote on next Monday, but that'd sort of be the framework, if we were gonna do something like that, is that agreeable to the board?
It would also have to be something that can actually be done from home, I mean.
Right.
You know, not just, I can do a couple of things from home.
Yeah, and this is, this is.
What's the medical thing that's COVID-related?
Right, and this is a situation not where the employee has a pre-existing condition, but a member of the employee's family has a pre-existing condition. The board's already dealt with situations with employees who have pre-existing conditions, and we've got a protocol. and we've got a protocol in place for that.
Okay.
Does that framework sound decent to the board? I'll bring it back Monday?
Put it together, and let's take a look at it. Everybody good with that?
Yeah. Okay, so we get to the, unless, any of you have other COVID stuff? Jason?
No.
No, okay. Then we get to the routine.
Okay.
Abatements! You guys don't have to stay for that stuff.
All right.
Do we have? Heck, I don't want to stay for this stuff. Patrol or sergeant for the chief update, no? For executive session, do we?
Oh, no.
No?
No. Love that as a routine, just in case, rather than having to think about it. But thank you.
I'm going to sign up there.
Thanks.
And now, I give.
I'm going to post that at my house.
He just gave all the checking already, the common, the basic support going. All the shooting.
Okay, well, hey, look, I'd rather spend less money than more money. So the transmitter's working?
Supposedly. He shot up the side, looks like it's an arrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, the side display.
Okay.
He said that five minutes, extra thing is $500.
Yeah.
I told him, and he said he'd get it, he'd order it, get it next week. Well, he's wanting to open it, I said he's opening it.
Yeah, at this point. Just, you know, the main, I have to check now the schedule, because if the radio's working, it updated the sign. And remember, there've been a couple of times around Christmas, people said, "The sign's broken." No, there weren't any messages.
Right.
All the messages had expired, because nothing was going on. So when I have a chance, I'll check the sign schedule online and see, are there any active?
Messages.
Right.
Good luck with your. All right, where are we?
We are recycling abatements for the current year.
Ugh. I've looked at all of these, and again, it's a timing issue, it's an incomplete issue. We either have criteria or we don't. Unfortunately, one of the problems is, I'm personally getting ready to revamp the whole recycling program anyway.
Well, at least this aspect of it, yes.
Yes, because it's not working, well, the program's working.
The abatement process is not.
The abatement process is not working. We either need to fix it or do something different, but we're in it for this fiscal year anyway.
Yeah, in fact.
We're trying to have a meeting with the solid waste committee, recycling committee, but because of mostly COVID issues here, we haven't been able to do that. So that will happen eventually, and we have to come up with a new plan here, because under the present circumstances, it isn't working effectively. At least the billing ended it. But for the time being, I don't know. We've got what we've got. Anyone else had a chance to look at the?
I reviewed it earlier, and it seems like it's the same story. People timing, when they get it all the time, or they're not recognizing they can meet it all the time. I mean, personally, if I was one looking for an abatement, I would have my paperwork in next year, not today, instead of waiting until the last minute to get the letter. But unfortunately, that's not happening. I can't see if we're going to stick to the policy that we've established, prosecuting is terrible, doing anything different than we've done in the past.
Well, I agree. We can't change what we've been doing and what's been done for years, because it opens up a whole Pandora's Box of issues. The criteria aren't a big secret. So we've got seven before us now. Do you want me to read the bill number? This is, these abatements are to do with bill numbers 486, 1269, 2416, 507, 1131, 2624, and 1212. I'm going to take the unpopular route here and move to deny the abatements.
Some of them, they even, they didn't come in at all. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 What was the reason to give them five dollars money?
They just, they happened on this, but I didn't know what happened, was they received previous bills that they sent out for, yeah, the 1892. So they must have received the bill that they could pass through, and then they said that, but they submit, they called and they said they could submit the abatement if they liked, even though it's previous years. So that's been, I can't tell them not to submit it.
No, no, no.
So that's why.
Nor should you.
This will be for one person, 1819.
And they haven't, they haven't paid any of those bills?
I'm sorry?
They haven't paid any of those bills yet?
No, they have.
Again, it's.
So, I'm thinking, they ignored the bills, completely? And it felt like, you know, they had a private service in there.
Well, sometimes, what they, they get the bill, and we hit the law, they get the bill, and they're like, "Oh, I have to buy the contract," and they don't think that they have to nullify it. So they just don't do anything.
But the bills have slipped in to the fact that if you want an abatement?
Then they'll get it, and then they'll feed it out here, and then they'll still be like, "Oh, I have," I'm not saying that they all pay, this is what we get for somebody to answer. They're like, "Oh, I wish you called us, because we told you what you need to do," and so that's what's happening with these ones that are passed. That's all I can say.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fine.
Again, this is all uncomfortable. This isn't anything anybody wants to do. It's hard, it's hard enough to deny somebody that got in late this year, never mind several years in a row.
Hey, do the term, that's sort of negative, you know, in part of individual, if they didn't read the whole bill or anything of that nature, to provide that in order to get an abatement, they had to forward the abatement form on the other.
I had a discussion with an individual who's actually seven years behind, and said that he kept getting the bills and throwing them out, because he had applied once. And I said, "Well, you don't understand, your conditions could change, that's why it happens every year. You could have, you know, gone back to not having a hall or any other." So do we, do we have a date set up to talk about this?
No, because we, you know, I briefed out to the recycling committee before saying the, I didn't say urgent, but not say next door to urgent, is that we really need to get a discussion on this, maybe several discussions, before we really get too far into the budget season, because we're going to be making decisions about how to fund this program, or how to continue the abatement program, or whatever we're going to do. If you want to pick a particular date, we'll probably need a Zoom meeting, given that, you know, so it's, you know, either we have a special night and do a Zoom meeting, or a special day and do a Zoom meeting. I'm happy to get it set up.
We could take one of our Mondays or Thursdays and do a Zoom meeting with them. Does that sound reasonable to anybody? I just. Because this needs to happen, we've got to come up with something here.
I mean, the way that, I agree that we definitely need to have the building available, and we need to have the recycling program available to the residents. But if the residents aren't using it, we're really, we're acting like this is a tax. So if it's a tax to keep the building open, then it should be coming out of tax. If it's, if it's the people aren't using the service, they shouldn't pay for it, the other people should be paying the amount that it needs necessary to run the service. So if we have to go to $65 per bill, so that people use the service, use the service, then I think that's what we do, but we need to.
There's a whole bunch of options. I mean, there's the option of eliminating curbside pickup and just using the facility that people can bring there, I don't know, that's a logistical problem with, you know.
Well, much that is that. Everyone should be, if they don't know, if it's a state law, it's just for the recycling. We have a recycling program, even if they didn't get the bill, they would let us know that they're recycling, even if they're a company. There's just too many of the butts to go around, just to say that we were ending with the fact that recycling is necessary, because they're doing recycling.
Well, at some point, even the fees won't sustain the program.
I understand that, but I think that's a discussion for a different time. We got three in front, and now.
Oh, as far as these go, yeah, you know, I agree, we need to get back on topic here. You're right, Charlie.
Okay. So do this, and then if you could tell me when you want, you finish the abatements.
Yeah.
And then you can tell me, pick a date, Charlie, get it set up, and we'll pick a Monday or Thursday meeting.
Okay, what Charlie said. Let's get, let's get back to the abatements at hand, I guess. Is anyone willing to make a motion, or?
I move to deny.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's for bill 2352?
That is, that is exactly correct, 2352. Moving on.
Anything else, any other more abatements?
There's a couple more, right.
Yeah, so then the next one.
There's bill number 1979.
Yeah, and again, previous years, and then they were, you know, and then they receive bills for previous years, $10, and they got, I mean, I did, yeah, I took the time, made up all the forms and all that, and stayed with that.
Unfortunately, these are all kind of similar, going back multiple years. I'm going to move, we deny, 1979. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One more? Yeah, again, bill number 68, it's, it's the same thing, multiple years, going back. I, I can't see anywhere around denying it, so I'll move, we deny.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, I guess. Pope's Tavern, update?
No update. I'll check back with the construction firm later this week, even though it's Thursday, I'll check back with them and ask whether they're still planning to try and start on the 16th or not.
Fieldstone Farms?
Uh, no, no, other than the previous response from Scott Claus, and I haven't heard anything back. I'm going to leave this on here, just as a tickler, because, you know, we do need to get something back from them, showing that the agreement was filed and approved by the court. The proposed budget discussion with the FinCon, this is for fiscal year '22, it's a little early, but we would have this meeting via Zoom, because we'd have enough, more than enough people, and, sorry.
That's the same night that we had the interviews?
That's true.
And I?
No, 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 that's fine. Um, let me talk to the finance committee, maybe if they're going to meet on the 23rd, we go with the 23rd.
That sounds better.
Is the information for that meeting, for the hiring process still in place for Zoom?
Yeah, yeah, Charlie, I think, updated the.
Yeah, I'll get you the, it's Google meets in this case, but yeah.
The phone number's easier to follow into on the Google meets, if you want to do it that way. We did add the other applicant.
Right.
To that, for the meeting.
Okay.
You have a proposed change in name of owner for the Class II license Alleys Auto Repair and Sales, he would like to change that to the owner being Allies Auto Repair, Alleys Auto Repair and Sales LLC, because he's incorporated.
I don't have a problem with that.
He's a zero license, Pam, what?
He's a zero license on Home Street.
Meaning he has no vehicles at the facility.
Well, he's not, um, yeah.
He just wants to, he has to have an address for his license.
Right.
Did I hear?
I'm moving.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
I had a resident call up last, earlier this week, or I think late last week, it was about some maintenance problems over at the Hops playground, and forwarded it, and poured to Dick Steele, who did check on it. So there's a cement bench that had been down inside the park, Steve Hayward's removing it. Dick's going to check on the equipment that seemed to be disrepair and getting in contact with Jonathan Sealing on who to contact to repair the equipment. Youth and Rec will probably pick up the bill. He's going to have one of his Youth and Rec personnel over in the week to sweep mulch from the walkways and evenly spread out the mulch again. It does obviously bunch up in places from time to time, and he's going to clean on, clean up the outside of the fence with the overgrowth, but he's not sure about ripping up the plants and the shrubbery, which probably should be left alone. Obviously, trash is always an issue, it doesn't matter where we are. I mean, he does have a sign put up, he's going to have a sign put up saying, "Carrie and Carrie Out." And I know he's been doing work over in the Home Street playground, too. So I was worried that nobody was checking conditions there, but he said he's over there about once a week, so he's aware of the situation, so I'm glad to hear that. We did get a $9,000 grant for recycling operations, this is Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. I talked to Susan Johnson there, and there are no immediate plans on how to use the money, obviously it has to be dealt with with recycling, but that includes a wide range of activities and projects, even just maintenance of the grounds, repair the grounds there. I did ask about Household Hazardous Waste Day, she is now playing one in the spring, we don't have a date or anything like that, but. Yes, please, yeah.
I make a motion that we allow Tom to sign the grant?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we've got the fire department engine contract signature is needed, so if the board were to authorize Tom to sign.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just on the property insurance, I, it was a little bit of an error of my, they, they did a revaluation of the school and bumped the value up, and then they said they were going to charge $25,000 more, that's the actual premium just for the school. It was only a $6,000 increase in premium because of the increase in the school. So I've signed off on that, and we'll have better coverage.
Did they also take into account that it's now completely?
Well, yes.
Suppressed?
But there's no change in the insurance for that. I had asked that a couple of years ago, because that question came up. One thing, I, you know, in my discussions with them, this is the value of the school as it is, it is not 100% replacement cost of the school, which would be a different school, given the standards, whether it's 19. be a different school, given the standards, whether it's nineteen seventy-three or nineteen ninety-three, are gonna be very different than twenty twenty-three, for instance. Yeah, I just, you know, what I'm even thinking about, which is a necessary standard, is I assume that if we lost the school and we rebuild, we'd have complete HVAC across the building, as an example. So, you know, it might be four hundred or five hundred dollars a square foot, something that, or if we had the Munson tornado come down Plymouth Street and take that out. It's, I, you know, I talked to Meyer, there is no coverage for something like that. What we'll have is our blanket property coverage, which will go beyond and above the twenty-three million dollars value specifically for the school, it would go up to thirty-nine million dollars. If we had to spend more money than that, obviously, we're gonna be working with Massachusetts School Building Authority, but if someone asks tomorrow, five years from now, why we didn't get insurance for the rebuild, the answer is you can't get it. You're always, you're, you are always gonna have some money that you're gonna have to get out of your own pockets to pay for the additional cost above and beyond what the insurance is. Um, because that was my worry, not worry, but when we were getting the work done and we were, knew we were gonna increase the value of the school, I said, well, I know what a cost of a rebuild is, that's not it. How do I get a rebuild insurance, and I can't. Um, so, the board is, should, no one should find fault with the board or anybody else associated with the schools, you just can't get the insurance for that. Um, if you are a larger community, let's say you're in Brockton, for instance, we have multiple, multiple buildings, the blanket insurance policy is much larger.
Right.
Here, the school is easily more than fifty percent of the total value of all the buildings that we have, so we can't get, the blanket policy will never be large enough to encompass the entire value of a rebuild.
Charlie, if that did happen, and we had to provide a place for school, would, we have money for portable buildings in the halls?
I believe so, yeah, because, um, what is it, interruption in operation, something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, you have insurance coverage for that.
Okay.
Um, I do not need to go into executive session with the board about contract negotiations, but we don't have anything else to bring to the board today, I don't know if Pam does.
On board.
In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some over?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.